Tuesday, December 15, 2020, pre-agenda meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. This is televised, and it is open for the public to attend. This is an opportunity for us to be able to receive an awful lot of technical information, budget-driven issues that staff presents to us, and then we look at that in our administrative agenda as appropriate for a consent motion. So what you'll see is we won't vote on individual items, but we will simply announce consent, and everyone will say consent. And Marvin Norman is joining us this afternoon remotely pursuant to the governor's or the state of emergency order that we have that allows remote participation. He is on a seven-second delay. So, you know, when we call for a vote, he's trying to answer about the same time that I call for the vote, but seven seconds, probably five seconds afterwards, he chimes in. So he's not slow on the draw, it's just that there is a definite gap in the electron process. We'll pause after every vote just to make sure that comes in. Ms. Jones, could you review any adjustments to the agenda?
We have two adjustments. The first is to remove attorney-client from closed session. That is no longer needed. And the other is under appointments before the board, or actually, I would ask Mr. Chairman where you would prefer to have this, is a COVID-19 update for Iredell County. Would you like that under appointments before the board, or for me to cover that in the county manager's report?
I think that would be appropriate at the appointments before the board.
Okay.
Since that's in lieu of Jane Henson or her staff being here.
Okay. So that would also be an addition.
Needs some special emphasis. So other than those two items, are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda from board members? Does anyone expect to be making any remarks under either new business or old business? All right. At this time, what we'll do is we will then have a motion at the seven o'clock hour to accept the agenda as adjusted, and she'll review the adjustments at that point in One public hearing that we had for Project GG is canceled this evening, and administrative matters, if you will please tee those up, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was requests from emergency management to apply for a local emergency planning committee or LEPC grant in the amount of $1,000 to purchase materials and equipment, and Mr. Green is here to make this presentation.
Ms. Jones, Mr. Chairman, this request is for emergency management to apply for the annual non-competitive local emergency planning committee grant, the LEPC. These funds, we apply for annually and typically receive them so that we can continue to support the local emergency planning committee. That committee focuses on Tier Two hazardous materials throughout the county in record-keeping and training for business owners and the public. This is non-competitive, non-matching, and it will not take effect until next budget year, and budget for that appropriately.
Any questions for Kent? Any consent?
Consent.
Second request is also from emergency management to apply for a Tier Two competitive hazardous materials grant in the amount of $10,000. We were awarded this grant the last two years. We conducted exercises, or an exercise last year with Mooresville and Statesville Hazmat Teams. We'll have another one in February of this year for this budget year's funds. Next year, we intend to use these funds to conduct a hazardous materials technician training course in conjunction with Mitchell Community College. Again, these are non-match funds, and we will budget for them in the next fiscal year.
Any questions for Director Green? Consent? Marvin, can you hear us? I just want to make sure I can hear you. A little longer than seven seconds.
I just reached out to Mrs. Norman to see if there were an issue.
Take a moment to reestablish communication. Communication is a little something that you deal with frequently. I neglected to, is going to welcome our two new board members, Scotty Graham and Melissa
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
Can you fix that, Ken?
Eder, our new vice chairman, and look forward to working with them over the next two years.
Unfortunately, no, sir, I cannot. I'm not an aviary expert.
I think it might be a squirrel.
Squirrel or a woodpecker, I'm not sure.
I know. We get the officer to come up.
That would be more a pure alleywood.
So this is their baptism of fire.
Yeah.
I'm just glad it's not me having to fix a technology.
Hey, Mr. Norman. It should not be.
Kent, do y'all write your own grants?
Yes, sir. Most of these that we apply for are templates from the state.
On the line, okay?
Kent, I will ask you also, do you have an average number of grants that you write or request per year?
Usually through emergency management, it's three to four per year. Mostly the Tier Two grants, which are two separate grants, then our ENPG or emergency management preparedness grants. And then this year, we received supplemental grant from that process for COVID-19 response.
How do you find your opportunities?
Sorry?
How do you find your opportunities for grants? Usually through emails or just searching for?
Our area coordinator at the state lets us know what's available. There are several other opportunities, like hazard mitigation grants that we've applied for in the past. Unfortunately, most of those are directed to the coast.
Maybe I'm back on there.
Okay. There we go. Marvin, we're in the consent agenda. We've just gone over items one and two from Kent Green concerning requests from emergency management to apply for two different grants, and that's been consented to. We're on item three, which is requests from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee to approve a budget amendment to allocate $200,000 from the countywide fire service district undesignated fund balance to the central volunteer fire department to purchase land for a future station.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. If you may remember, and for the two new members of the board, Fire Tax Oversight Committee met on November 5th and received three requests from three departments to purchase land or to pay off existing debt for land for future stations. We were voted on, approved at that level, and presented to the Board of Commissioners on the 17th of November, at which time I was directed to go back and take a second look at those requests, make sure that the locations were appropriate, and that the value of the land purchased was in line with other purchases being made. That review was conducted on November 25th, and at the December 9th meeting of the Fire Tax Oversight Committee, I submitted that information to the committee. My recommendations were to table the Monticello Fire Department debt payment and to table the West Iredell land purchase because they were not pressing. But the central fire department purchase of $200,000 for 10 acres of land was my recommendation to move forward with. That property is about 100 yards from the current central station, so it would not impact service delivery. Fire Tax Oversight Committee accepted that recommendation, voted unanimously to bring it back to the board for further consideration.
Any additional questions or comments? None? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Jones?
unanimous and count consent. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Kent.
The next item is a request from Solid Waste to apply for a grant to replace aging diesel engines, a grant in the amount of $226,225, and Mr. Lambert is here to make that request.
Good evening, David.
Good evening. It's good to see new members here. Welcome you, wish you good luck with your tenure. So we are here to apply for permission to make that grant application. It's the grade grant. It's grant to replace aging diesel engines. It's administered by Charlotte Mecklenburg Air Quality Department. Each year, they have federal funds on hand to do this, and because we are included in their non-attainments zone, we are eligible for a grant. We've used this in the past. It's a fairly easy grant to apply for. So we would like your permission to apply for it this year to be used in the upcoming budget year if awarded. What we would be asking for is $266,225, which is 25% of the cost of replacing a landfill compactor. Whether they would award all that or not, we don't know. We just need to apply for the money now, get ourselves in line. As part of our obligation, we would have to destroy an old compactor. We have a 1996 model that we bought, used in 2006, $445,000. Through the years, we've put about $300,000 into it in repairs and maintenance, and it needs about $50,000 worth of work right now. So it's getting close to being scrap metal, and part of the grant, we can sell the remains for scrap metal. So it's been a good program for us. We've done that one time, and also the Edira grant through Mecklenburg County as well to replace a roll-off truck. So I did bring Mike Ruffey with me tonight. If you raise your hand, he's the Assistant Solid Waste Director, and he'll be handling this grant. I've signed that to him, so I want him to come along tonight.
Maybe you may want, for the benefit of everybody out there, to sort of explain why we're working with Mecklenburg County. It's because of the air quality.
Well, it's something the federal government, since they have their own air quality department, they cede some of that authority to them to be able to administer grants, and because Mecklenburg County has poor air quality, and we're in that area around them, I believe there's seven counties that's considered in the non-attainment zone, even though we're not so bad. But this is designed at reducing the amount of NOx or nitrous oxides that gets into the air, and so any engine that's below a Tier Three emissions standard qualifies. You replace it with a Tier Four, so that's what we'd be doing. And it's just, it's, you know, the idea to improve our overall air quality. I like to tell people since the time when I was a kid, which, you know, that's been a pretty good while now, used to, and you'd get in August, you'd see all the smog in the air, and things looked really bad. You don't see that now. The air's a lot cleaner today. So this is just another step in keeping with that.
You may also want to just speak to what your department is unique in, in terms of being really an enterprise fund.
Excuse me?
You may want to speak to what your department, how it operates as an enterprise fund.
That is correct. We are an enterprise fund, so we generate our own revenues. It's either through the tipping fees or grants like this that we receive, the household availability fee, some state reimbursements on things like white goods disposal and tires, those kind of things. But we're not getting any of the general fund, so I like to tell people, basically, we're like a business that the county owns. I have to break even at the end of every year. I'm not required to make a profit or anything like that, but we do put money aside for future needs. So, yeah, it's a little bit different. You know, we look at things from a business aspect. We try to deliver good customer service because people, that's coming in, that's our customers. I do want to point out, just for clarity, I think I transposed a number somewhere because at the top, I've got 226,225, and at the bottom here, I had 226. So I'm looking at the actual, the grant format Mike filled out for finance, it says 266,255. So that's the number we'll go with. But again, it depends on the funding they have available, how many people apply, what they decide to do, and then we would make a decision, if we're allowed to apply for it and awarded, we would be making that decision then whether this is worth accepting or not.
Even though this isn't coming out of our general fund, we still approve it as an oversight body.
David, the two grants in the past that we have gotten in 2011 and 14, were those 25% funded, or do you remember what percentage of those were?
I think that was basically the formula they used, and the one grant was one of the larger that they've ever delivered on, had a really good day. They calculate, you know, the amount of emissions reduction you're going to get, and that determines in the formulas how much money they're willing to advance for you. So if we have a good project, that really helps us.
I had somebody call me and ask me why we only apply for 25%, and I checked my packet, and for the record, it just says the maximum amount available for funding is 25, up to 25%. So I wanted them to know we would apply for all we could get, but that is the maximum amount if awarded.
Absolutely.
For the record.
Yep.
Any additional questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Dave.
Kent.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Planning and Development for approval to release the remaining of $2,000, excuse me, $2,031.25 cash bond on a stormwater control pond project on 1214 River Highway in Mooresville, and Mr. Matthew Todd is here to make this presentation.
Good evening. Just a little background on these requests is anytime anyone wants to do a high-density development, there is an option that they can put up some type of financial guarantee that they will install whatever measure that is, and their project then gets to continue forward, which is the case with this one. It's a project where they developed under the high-density option, required a retention pond, they put the money to the side, they're able to continue with their project, actually get it built out, and then as they develop that infrastructure, they can then come back for release of the money. They came last year, according to, based on ordinance, they have to come kind of in a two-part series. They came last year to get the first portion released, and now they are coming back to get the remaining portion released. The pond has been inspected and meets all the requirements from the ordinance, so at this point, staff recommends releasing the final amount.
Any questions for Mr. Todd?
I have one quick one. Will there continue to be inspections?
We do yearly inspections on those facilities, yes.
Even though that's paid back?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Yearly.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Kent.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the November 2020 refunds and releases, and there are no commissioner names on this list.
This is where our finances are laid bare.
Say that.
Consent?
Consent.
Kent.
The next item is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on December 7, 2020.
Everyone had an opportunity to read those. Actually, in terms of voting on the approval of the minutes for the last meeting of the board preceding this, can they be approved by this entire board or just the members that were present? Because we conducted business.
Correct. We did. Probably what we'll have to do is the seated, the three that were of the previous board would approve that set, and then the five approve the other.
I think that would be the safest way to handle it.
All right, if you're just.
Sorry.
I'll break it up in a minute on this meeting. I'll break it up. Is that okay?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, so for the approval of the meetings from December 7th, for the last newly constituted board with Commissioner Norman, Commissioner Howe, and myself voting, consent?
Consent.
And for the minutes of the newly constituted board, is there consent?
Consent.
Yeah, yes, consent.
Okay, item eight.
Item eight is a request from Economic Development to present the Revamp project, which is a joint initiative to enhance the market capabilities of motorsports-related manufacturers in North Carolina, and Ms. Jen Bojer with Iredell County Economic Development Commission is here to make this presentation.
Evening, Jen.
Good evening. How are you?
Very well.
Thank you for having us here. I am here to present with me Matthew Pierce. He's our Director of Existing Industry and Expansion, and we're here to present a joint initiative called Revamp. It's in response to the motorsports industry and the shift with the new NASCAR next-gen car and how it's being made and deployed. As a result of the shift to the new car, the car's going to be more streamlined in terms of consistency across cars. So with that shift, it's going to impact companies in Iredell County. Iredell County has a substantial number of companies that work on the specifics of how the car is made, mainly our teams, our race teams, and our component manufacturers. And we're trying to get ahead of this impact, to look at ways that we can help these companies who primarily work in the NASCAR and motorsports industry space to shift into new industry segments and diversify their business opportunities. So that's really the structure around what we're bringing to you today. We've also introduced this to the town of Mooresville as a consideration for our program. What it is, is we've worked with, since November of 2019, we've been looking at this to figure out with the North Carolina Motorsports Association, NC State's Industry Expansion Solutions Division, and our regional partners to figure out what is it that we could do to help with this. And there's a number of initiatives involved. But this one specifically is tailored to do an assessment of companies that are interested in this space, to look at what their capabilities are and what opportunities they have to shift. And that assessment is done on the front end through some partners. Once they complete that assessment, then we would deploy, working with vendors, to help them with that shift. And there's a variety of different things that they would be looking at. So obviously, with companies being impacted and them being smaller companies, we've developed a match program, grant program, to help with existing industry and are proposing that to the town of Mooresville and Iredell County, and we'll expand beyond that to the city of Statesville and Troutman if there's interest, to provide a matching grant for companies. So companies would put 50% into this, and then Iredell County, in partnership with the town, would put some money into this, or if they're Iredell County-specific, it would be Iredell-specific to support the company with those next steps.
And we're trying to get ahead of this impact, to look at ways that we can help these companies who primarily work in the NASCAR and motorsports industry space to shift into new industry segments and diversify their business opportunities. So that's really the structure around what we're bringing to you today. We've also introduced this to the town of Mooresville as a consideration for our program. What it is, is we've worked with, since November of 2019, we've been looking at this to figure out with the North Carolina Motorsports Association, NC State's Industry Expansion Solutions Division, and our regional partners to figure out what is it that we could do to help with this. And there's a number of initiatives involved. But this one specifically is tailored to do an assessment of companies that are interested in this space, to look at what their capabilities are and what opportunities they have to shift. And that assessment is done on the front end through some partners. Once they complete that assessment, then we would deploy, working with vendors, to help them with that shift. And there's a different, a variety of different things that they would be looking at. So obviously, with companies being impacted and them being smaller companies, we've developed a match program, grant program, to help with existing industry and are proposing that to the town of Mooresville and Iredell County. And we'll expand beyond that to the city of Statesville and Troutman if there's interest to provide a matching grant for companies. So companies would put 50% into this. And then Iredell County, in partnership with the town, would put some money into this, or if they're Iredell County-specific, it would be Iredell-specific to support the company with those next steps to take that opportunity to diversify. The program's been proven. North Carolina Defense and...
Defense Industry Diversification.
Okay. Defense Industry Diversification Initiative. I know it as NCDD, but I know you all may not, has been successful in doing this with companies in the defense sector. And so we have some proven models. There's a few companies that have taken advantage of that program locally in Iredell. So really, our request before you today is to see if there's interest in this, in doing this grant program. And if so, we would answer any questions that you have.
How many companies have you identified that are impacted by this, the race team? And what are the numbers of employees that are specifically affected? I'm assuming it affects not everyone, but a percentage that work in either design or fabrication and all that.
Right. So there are roughly, I think, 80 component manufacturers working in motorsports here in North Carolina. 70% of them are in four zip codes, two in Cabarrus, two here in Iredell. So you're looking at total employment on the component manufacturer side versus the team side. I want to say it's about 300 to 400. Teams tend to be much larger in component manufacturers, so some of the largest ones are 400, 500 folks. This is a program specifically for component manufacturers, however. So a lot of the folks that we'd be looking at would be companies of 5, 10, 15 people. That's pretty normal for component manufacturers. Some of the larger ones like a Roush Yates would be significantly larger, but that is an outlier.
So in other locations where these transitional programs have been implemented, what is the success rate of them being able to make that shift?
I can't answer that directly. I can get back to you on that as an answer. I know that locally, some of the companies that have worked with this comparable program, Roush Yates would be one of them, has successfully created a sort of separate part from Roush Yates engines and diversified to serve additional industries, including aerospace and some defense. And that's been pretty typical. This began, NCDD was a model to help folks not have so many eggs in the defense basket. But it wasn't just manufacturers. But of their first cohort on which this is modeled, as far as I know, they've all been able to enter into new markets. What that looks like in the midst of COVID, that's hard to say. But I'd be happy to pull those numbers for you.
Okay.
Assuming that, you know, what would it be our maximum obligation that we're talking about here monetarily if everybody played?
That was my question, because it says your proposal. It says the ICE DC suggests Iredell County develop a matching grant program for companies going through the Revamp program. The grant amount would be dollar-for-dollar matchup to $10,000, $5,000 maximum if company is within a municipality with a matching grant program. These funds can only be used for next steps identified by company officials and IES staff through the Revamp program. My question is, is there an annual cap to our county manager, I guess, and you guys? And in other words, what I'm concerned about is I don't want an unlimited amount annually if we did that. And is there a, you know, let's say we invested $50,000 a year, would that maybe be a first-come, first-served to that budget if we were going to consider that? Because it doesn't address that.
Sure. Yep. And...
That would be my concern, is to have an open agreement that we do that, and it has an open end without a cap.
Yeah, so what we were looking at was an initial pilot program of eight to 10 companies being the first cohort, and then looking at a second cohort, depending on how much interest there is. So I would say max at $10,000...
Would be 80.
Would be, well, 80 to 100,000 for the first cohort, because it's eight to 10 companies.
But my next question is, it says 5,000 maximum if a company's within a municipality with a matching grant program. If Harmony, Mooresville, Troutman, and Statesville didn't have a matching program, then we would be doing the bill of 10,000, because it says 5,000 if they had a program. If they chose not to have a program, then that's 10,000 coming from us instead of a split within the municipalities.
Yeah, the municipality, I mean, right now...
I think if they're within a municipality, if we did it, from my perspective, we'd cap it at 5,000. Because that's incentive for them to get in the game, it's benefiting their taxpayers in the city as well. That's just my take on it.
I don't think that we're going to find many outside of the three larger jurisdictions.
Right.
In fact, most of them are in the town of Mooresville.
Right.
We have approached the town of Mooresville, but we don't want to necessarily leave out those that we haven't found. And so we certainly, once we got this approved by the county and the town of Mooresville, we would...
I just wanted you to see that. You may have thought of that, but me reading this, you know, and having those questions is their incentive to say, well, if the county's going to carry the water, we can benefit from it. But what we can say is if they're within a municipality, I'd like to see a cap annually from my perspective. And if they're within any municipality, our max is 5,000.
That's what it was intended to be.
I get it, but it didn't say that. So I'd just like to see that wording added if we approved it. You know, y'all may have had that discussion, but I didn't see it.
And if I may just stop you. It's on the agenda to give you the introduction to the program. We're certainly not asking the board to commit the funds tonight, because we would have to have a budget amendment to do that.
Right.
But they are looking to see if there is interest. I think Mooresville has, the town of Mooresville has already expressed interest in the program, and primarily, those companies are located inside the town of Mooresville. But, so if you have questions or things like that, that you want them to go back and work out between the municipalities, certainly let them know. And then if you don't have a desire to participate in the program, let them know that as well. But I just want to make sure the board knows, we're not asking you to fund the program tonight, because if, once we get everything worked through, we'll come back later with a budget amendment to actually do that.
Right.
They're not funds in the budget.
And that's also, it's all for this topic, but when we're done with this topic, I'd like for you, for the public's purpose and our new board members, to explain Matthew Pierce's role in walking new businesses and individuals potentially that call you guys through a permitting process that don't do it for a living. We helped create that position when you came, to help people through these processes, to know who to call and how to get through these things. It's been a really good PR measure and good feedback. Had a gentleman call the other day and asked me, and I told him to call. But these guys may not be aware, and for reminder of the public, you guys offer that service to help people. So if you don't mind elaborating on that when we're done with this part.
That's fine. Yep. No, I appreciate your questions.
Yes, thank you.
Let me circle back here, because the point of this is really to preserve jobs.
Sure.
Individual jobs. Now, if you just leave it to the market, then employers who have a need for this skillset are going to hire those individuals to fill their need, conceptually. To the extent that some additional department of a current race team can reconfigure itself and plug in as a supplier, whether it's the defense industry or any other industry, is another option that you're encouraging through this grant program, right? Well, I want to make sure, seems to me, that, you know, we're not creating something that otherwise be filled through the marketplace of folks coming in, you know, large industry or whatever, coming in that's looking for these skillsets, which I think is, you know, NASCAR tech and Roush Yates are producing, you know, a lot of highly capable technicians that are filling a need. So I want to make sure that we're not sort of creating a competition, if you will, that otherwise, you know, they would find a way to fill needs of other employers. You know, if we were out here and these were the only employers in the county, and their jobs would go to South Carolina, that's one thing. But I don't want to create competition for our own potential other employers. But I want to make sure these folks stay employed. So it's a balancing act, and I'm not sure exactly where this all comes down in that process. You know, you start out small here, but, you know, the top line is an $800,000 bill, 80 companies at 10 grand.
She said eight companies.
No, it's...
No, top line, 80 companies at 10,000. Or if, to your point, we said, well, we'll do a, since the majority are in a municipality, if we'll go on the line for 50% of that, then it's 400,000 top-line liability for us. I just want to make sure that our return on investment is not something that, we're not spending money on something that the market might actually solve a good bit of the problem for, you know what I'm saying?
Did you say eight or 80 companies?
Yeah, let me clarify that. It's actually eight, eight to 10 companies for the first cohort at 10,000 each. So it's 80 to 100,000, not 800,000. It's not 80, 80 companies.
Well, cohorts, aren't there?
Well, we were looking at a pilot program initially. I mean, if you're comfortable with funding a pilot program to get started, and you're comfortable with committing 80 to 100,000 to see how that goes, we could do a first pilot program, and then we could come back and make a second request. And again, some of those would be...
What you said originally was there were 80 companies.
We were saying there are 80 companies total in this space. Not all of those are in Iredell County.
Okay.
But in terms of the...
That's the top-line number I need to get at.
Okay. Not all of those.
Budget issues.
Does it make sense, since we're brainstorming, to ask the participating companies to try to retrain and retain existing employees to the new industry, or a percentage of that, to try, to, to your point, does that help keep these people employed with that existing industry when they're changing and revamping their programs? To ask them to have a percentage, or at least a percentage, to receive some of these funds to retrain and keep, or does that compete with the other industry, to your point?
If I can give you a sense of the way this would work, right? So individual companies would apply to be in that first cohort of approximately eight to 10. North Carolina State would vet that first group, choose eight to 10 that would work. Each company goes through an extensive process with the folks at IES, NC State, to get a sense of the strengths and weaknesses, and where it is they can pivot to, and where they want to pivot to, right? It is a deep dive with every single company. That information is taken back, analyzed, and brought to the company with all the resources that we have at hand, everything from workforce development board, funds, customized training, everything else. And some of this will be certifications, right? So they can move into aerospace, right, or other industries. But it will also include funds for workforce. This, the money that we're asking for, is just the back end of approximately $50,000 budgeted. We've been in conversation with Commerce for a couple of months. There may be roughly $20,000 per company they can provide. There's a significant amount of money in workforce funds that will also be brought to bear on this. So yes, the expectation is they will be, there will be opportunities for retraining the folks.
But I think it's important that the company is also putting money into this to move to that.
Right.
And the intention is, sure, could the, could some of these employees retrain and redeploy within the community? Yes. But if the company has an opportunity to survive and retool and maintain, and those folks can stay within that company, this is just a resource to help them do that. They have to go through that front-end assessment, and then they, as a company, have to make a commitment, a financial commitment, to say, we want to do this. We want to diversify. We want to try this. I think what you get is an opportunity for the company to diversify beyond where they are right now. And so your community starts to diversify. If we're looking at moving into defense and aerospace, for instance, which we've seen success with motorsports in, this provides us with an opportunity to launch into that with some smaller companies in that area. And we've seen success with MSI Defense and Roush Yates, doing that, Fiber Works, Composites, a number of companies that have moved into that.
Didn't Kozlowski move into that, too?
Yes, Cam did as well. So it's a little bit different than what we usually come to your support, but it's an existing industry workforce retention, small business model to provide a match grant, so the company's still putting funds into it. And we're supplementing that with a lot of different partners to make something happen that would, I'd say, help us diversify as a community, not just the company.
Well, it helps knowing that upfront, vetting and investment from the companies, and know this is kind of on the backside, knowing they're got skin in the game to revamp and repurpose as well.
That's right.
Out of these companies that you're seeing the decline of future opportunity, and they're looking to diversify, out of these that you've seen currently, do they have locations of similar facilities in other states? Or are we looking at mostly in Iredell County, or are they just scattered throughout?
I think we've mostly looked in North Carolina in terms of our focus and within the region. And as we've scaled that, as Matthew mentioned, we've noticed that the concentration of these are in four zip codes. Even, we approached this a couple of different ways in terms of funding, but we realized that from a regional standpoint, not everybody would benefit from a program like this. This is why we're coming back from a different angle to look at how we could fund this, because it's not necessarily a regionally funded program. There are certain counties that would benefit and have more impact than other counties would.
That's what I was looking at, trying to make sure that we covered all the stakeholders with this piece, and not trying to identify some company that was vastly scattered throughout. Okay.
No. And we would, I mean, as a criteria for any company that applied for this, they would have to be located here, and it would have to impact their operation here. I would say that. It's not something that they would deploy, you know, for an operation somewhere else.
Okay.
I know in the NCAA that I serve on, there's been discussions on municipalities and counties trying to be proactive in retaining and repurposing industry in general, and trying to push existing properties and buildings and things like that before new buildings go up, if you can get people into those sites and get them to occupy and use them, instead of setting empty in the counties and municipalities. Because y'all have been pushing those things as well, right?
Yeah, we have been. Yeah, what we don't want to do is see a major impact of multiple companies that are in this industry sector suddenly lay off all these folks.
Right.
This is a way to get in front of it before the shift happens, and start helping them think through what are the opportunities that they can do now to shift. And sometimes they don't think about that. Their focus is motorsports, it's what they've known, it's why they're here. So what can you do to help them think differently about where they can repurpose?
It's like any business and industry, if you're not innovative and change with the market to service your clientele or the public, you're going to be losing business.
That's right. And what we're doing is we're bringing experts that will come in and do that assessment on the front end, and then based on that assessment, identify the right... on the front end and then based on that assessment, identify the right programs that can help them with that shift.
Right.
So it's not, it's not a cookie cutter approach. It's a customized approach for each company and then the company has to have a willingness to go through that next step and the funding and the financing on their end to also go through that next step to make that shift.
Okay.
How many of these companies, and I assume you're talking about relatively small suppliers, have the wherewithal in their planning process, you know? This is a big shift for a lot, which, you know, sort of your neighborhood, neighbor supplying parts to your neighbor to having a business model change that's radically different, that would, you know, supply parts maybe nationwide or to a nationwide consumer. And I guess the assessment process will identify whether the business model is executable and whether it's worth an investment. Because what you're asking us to do is essentially be sort of a shareholder, to invest in a company that is reorienting itself, which if it's successful is great. But four out of five companies don't make it in the first two years. So it's got to be a really detailed analysis, seems to me, about business plan viability.
If I may. And we've taken, what strikes me as a conservative tack on this, insofar as these aren't, this grant money isn't given upfront, it is a repayment for having gone through the process of certification, Six Sigma Training, something like that. Once the companies have identified the new business model, what is they need to change? We're reimbursing them for paying into the steps that it takes to make, for them to make that pivot. So it's not, they already have done.
They've already done.
Yes.
Have demonstrated a proven track record. It's just not worth throwing money out of the water until it comes back.
Making sure those dollars are spent on what they say they were going to spend them on and ends up somewhere else. Okay.
Sure you vetted that, but we appreciate you letting us ask those questions because it's, you know, the citizens and people need to know. I'm sure you're doing your due diligence along with administration, but we didn't know what we didn't know. But it seems like a good program potentially.
Yeah, I know, and these questions help us as we frame it because, you know, it's, I know it's new to you and.
Do you have any more material you could actually send us to look over?
Yes.
About what you're doing already?
Sure.
Also, is this.
Too much.
Was this also what you presented to Mooresville's Town Board as well?
We didn't do it in this formal way. We've done it at their strategic planning retreat and through separate conversations with the town manager. They're the ones that initially came to us and said we need to do something. It was actually during our visit at NASCAR Tech last November. And I think they're a little bit more familiar with the impact they're seeing and what they're hearing from the companies. So I think that, you know, they understand the need for this.
So they're probably maybe seeing, as those graduates are coming out of NASCAR Tech, not finding as many jobs?
Say that again.
Say it is, I'm sorry, here, let me do this. So as the graduates are coming out of NASCAR Tech, are they finding that the percentage is less of the ones being hired? So are they having trouble finding jobs? I just know what some of the key indicators were. So as you're coming through, because, you know, Race City area would be seeing these pieces there. So if those students who graduate expecting to find a job in that field, if they were not finding those positions within a quick amount of time.
That's a metric from NASCAR Tech. I think it's more through surveying that we've done with the component manufacturers.
Okay.
And through the.
So their orders are down?
To understand what their trajectory is going to look like. And some of that shift has already started happening. There's an expectation that that's going to increase and accelerate as we move closer to 2022 when this, when this car is deployed. Some of that has been delayed because of COVID and they shifted it out of the year. So we bought ourselves a little bit more time. But it's, I don't know if NASCAR was an indicator that you all looked at.
So with, so the North Carolina Motorsports Association actually engaged us.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Mooresville approached us originally and then the NCSMA asked us to be part of the solution. This is, so that's one of the indicators here. We've spoken with probably two dozen at this point, component manufacturers who've called for something like this. Or who have already done something like this. The challenge was with looking at the numbers at NASCAR Tech, right? They might be, like, if you have an industry in decline, new people who are cheaper might be hired more frequently, right?
Good point.
Because they're turning over. So I mean, that's, that's why I wouldn't use that particular metric.
Good, good indicators. Thank you.
Well, I commend you all for not just thinking outside the box, but being outside the box and, you know, dealing with what you can see on the horizon, you know, and not being reactive, but proactive. Obviously, this is a new concept to us, which is not to say that that's not the way we ought to go. But I think collectively, we all want to be more of a warbird puzzle before we stroke any checks. But, you know, as you've said, I think it was an important point that this is a backend reimbursement after they've basically got a proven track record in terms of making this shift.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Norman had a question, I think. I didn't know if you heard him.
Marvin, did you have a question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, yeah, do you have examples of where this program works somewhere else?
And I can, I can provide the list that NC, North Carolina State has. It's a public list of their NCDD participants and what they've done for them. So yes, I can do that.
Were you able to hear that, Marvin?
Yes, yes.
You can provide a list of some.
I did, I did.
Okay.
I think that would help if we could get some of that material and study a little bit.
Yep, and I'll just mention that I know traditionally we come to you for grant programs for large industry. I think this is an opportunity to help smaller companies, especially companies in an industry that have meant a lot to our community and are struggling to figure out what that next step will be for them. So that's really, and 80% of our growth comes from our existing industry. Majority of our companies are small businesses. So we're always looking at ways in which we can be supportive across the board and that kind of speaks to the Small Business Embudsman Program, which you mentioned. So I don't know if you want us to touch on that.
This is a good segue into discussing with.
So we are, I'm very proud to have Matthew on our team. He is with the Small Business Embudsman Program and the support that we're able to give companies in helping them through navigating, as you can imagine, in navigating starting a business. So as you can imagine, it's your first time as a small business figuring out government and all the regulatory steps that you need to take. And often it's a foreign language, you know? It's, you don't know what's the right step to take and what's the next step and, you know, how to get through and what to do. And so Matthew's been a really great resource to help companies understand, navigate that and translate even what that means for a company so that they're not getting themselves in a pickle. A lot of times it's a timing standpoint for them from start to finish to get their business off the ground. And so that's been key. I'll speak to two things and I'll let Matthew give you an example or a couple of examples, if you'd like, of how we've done that. But two things that we're working on right now is, one, a business resource guide. There are a number of resources that when a company calls us or when we go out and do an existing industry visit that we're connecting them with. We're helping them understand how to launch, you know, how to grow, how to find funding, how to connect. And, you know, that's something that you just learn with time in our business in being, doing, working with different businesses and knowing how to navigate the community of resources. So we'll be launching that. We're in final production with that right now and we'll be launching that in first quarter of next year. I think you'll be pleased with it. It's something that the community as a whole can use. The second project that we're going to be working on is a navigating that development process. So, you know, what are the steps that you need to take to start a business? All the things that are inside Matthew's head that we appreciate him for, but I certainly couldn't answer if a company called me, I would need to rely on Matthew. And there's some ways that we can give them a little bit more of a checklist with each of our communities. So that's something that we've identified as a need and something that I think will help us as a community. Do you want to?
Yeah, so one good example of this would be Gatherings Catering and Event Center, which is over on Signal Hill Drive in the eastern part of town here. I got connected with them very early when they were still looking for a location. Through the early conversations, I learned that while they'd had a lot of restaurant experience, had no experience setting up shop. So I was able to connect them with a list of architects that we have worked with regularly here in the county. They chose from among those architects that we originally provided. And then as each sort of step came along the way, whether it was working through zoning, science in zoning, building standards and environmental health, we were able to help them sort of identify forthcoming marks and really take the, a lot of the stress out of it. A lot of the work is about the business climate for this community, helping folks feel like it's just a smoother process and have it be a smoother process as best as possible. We also provided them with them resources for funding. In this case, it's a minority owned business. And so some of those resources were things that we had been connected with just this past year ourselves. They just opened up last month and I think today is the last day that you can order your Christmas meal through them. So you might want to get on that. So Gatherings is a kind of place where from the very beginning to the very end, and we wrote a press release and announced that they were coming here. So there was sort of free publicity for them even at the very end. So that gives you a sense of all the kinds of things that we could do for a company. We like to get them nice and early to be able to help them all along the way.
And sometimes we get involved after the fact. So when they hit a snag, that's when they call us and then we can help them figure out how to get back on track. You know, if there's a miscommunication or a misunderstanding. And we do this every day, day in and day out. Matthew and I are kind of smiling at each other because it's both with large companies and small companies to help them navigate the government side of things and the regulatory process and, you know, what they, what they need to do. It's questions they've never had to approach before and they're uncomfortable sometimes asking government because they don't want to get themselves in trouble. So they come to us as a liaison. We help them understand what the question is, that you all are actually friendly and you want to be supportive of them and that it's, you know, not, that it's okay. And then help getting, get them to the right answer so that they can move forward.
Because we saw, we saw, several years ago, we saw a need for a collaborative effort to help people navigate through that process, which also frees up our inspection's department employees and people like that, having to help people walk through a process. But if they will do their due diligence upfront, if they're aware of that program, they know how to navigate A to Z through the process and to get the proper protocols and permits and planning and all that beforehand, before they get into a bind and then have to come back and clean up in all five. So it was a really good effort. We just need to make sure the public knows about the program. That's what we've got to do.
Well, I think you've answered the mail.
Yeah.
In a big way in terms of our expectations. We instituted this program, which truth and credit where credit's due, former Commissioner and now Representative Jeff McNeely, this was an idea that he had. And so we basically bumped up our IE, Arredell County Economic Development Corporation budget to accommodate half the position. So he does other work for ICEDC in addition to this small business ambulance piece. But across the board uniformly, the feedback that we've gotten from those small businesses, it was a godsend, you know, in terms of their being able to get off the ground and not have to waste time or money in just checking the block processes. We all know it's best to be checked.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think it's important, we're very engaged with our local partners. So the downtown groups, the chambers, we're very active across the board, but Matthew specifically is working with all those partners that do the technical assistance to make sure that we're identifying those partners early and concerns. And I think it's been a resource to you all and the government partner, but it's also been a resource to our downtown commissions and chambers and Mitchell Community College that may get a small business request and vice versa for us to build relationships with them so that we're collaborating on a solution for them. So we appreciate your support and funding. Small business is not an easy task. They take a lot of handholding, but, you know, they're important to our community. Well, thank you.
Okay, so we're simply going to be consenting to approval of the concept as they've laid out. It's not obligating us to any specific funds.
What I would be requesting for, what I would be reporting out under the consent agenda is just that this was an informational only item and there was no action taken and more information will be coming to the board from Arredell County EDC as we go through this process for a decision later.
Consent?
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Jen, Matthew. Merry Christmas.
Those are all the items that are listed for the administrative matters that are for the consent agenda.
All right. Moving on. There are no announcements of any vacancies this evening. We did have announcements back on November 17th. There will be two appointments, we consider for the Personnel Advisory Committee, two appointments to the Planning Board for the alternate positions. And the individuals that have applied have, you know, previously provided their Personnel Advisory Committee.
Those two are reappointments. They are currently serving and agreed to serve again.
And two alternate appointments for the Planning Boards. We do have three individuals that have indicated an interest. One of the things that we have discussed is opening the aperture of our advertising, if you will, of the liability to the general public for opportunities for service on these boards and commissions. And we do have a place in our website to go to these boards and commissions, but unless you just happen to like to go to that little place in the constellation of departments, you really don't know so much that there's available opportunities. So we're looking at a way to sort of wave the flag that there's an opening on a board or a commission, direct people to that and also reach out with Facebook so that we can maximize dissemination beyond simply us announcing it as we're legally. Hey. And we will enter. Hey. And we will entertain a motion at the seven o'clock hour to fill those positions. No unfinished or new business that I'm aware of. Do you want to give us a preview of the County Manager's Report?
I can. My, my, the two things that I would be reporting is that the county offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday, December the 24th and 25th. It's hard to believe that's next week in observance of the holidays. And then the other item would be to, actually, I take that back. We're going to do that under Appointment Before the Board at the seven o'clock. That would be the COVID update.
Before we move into a closed session, any further comments? All hearts free. And we will now move into a closed session to discuss issues relative to economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, there's 318.11 subsection A4.